Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Here.
Here.
Moore?
Here.
O'Kane?
Here.
Chaner?
Here.
Stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Allen, you want to meet me at the mic there?
So we actually remember that. There we go. Thank you. Me too. No, I'm okay. Thank you.
It says help yourself.
Okay. Whereas Sioux City Public Library has long served as a trusted institution for all members of the community regardless of race, ethnicity, creatibility, sexual orientation, gender identity, and socioeconomic status. And whereas the Sioux City Public Library adapts to the ever-changing needs of the Sioux City community continually expanding their collection services and partnerships. And whereas the Sioux City Public Library plays a critical role in the economic vitality of communities by providing internet and technology access, literacy skills, support for job seekers, small businesses, and entrepreneurs. Whereas Sioux City Public Library is an accessible and inclusive place to promote the sense of local connection, advancing understanding, civic engagement, and shared community goals. Whereas the Sioux City Library is a cornerstone of democracy, promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all. Now therefore, I, Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim April 23 through the 29th, 2023, as National Library Week and encourage all residents to visit the Sioux City Public Library in person or online to explore the wealth of resources available. Future, you need to make that a little shorter. We got to go two pages. Say it that good anymore. Who's going to say it two words?
Me, I guess. I just want to say thank you to the council for this. It's been a good year for the library and we're getting ready for summer reading, so we're going to continue and it'll be good. So, yeah, no, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, all the labor guys, whoever's representing labor. Come on, you can all get, come on Frank, get up here. Whereas every year, tens of thousands of American workers are killed by workplace injuries and occupational disease. And whereas tens of thousands more are permanently disabled and millions are injured and made ill. And whereas concerned Americans are determined to prevent these tragedies by observing Workers Memorial Day on April 28, 2023, as a day to remind these citizens, these victims of the workplace injuries and disease, renewing our efforts to enforce safety and health protections and redirecting ourselves to improving safety and health in every American workplace. Now therefore, I, Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim April 28, 2023, as Workers Memorial Day in Sioux City, Iowa.
I would present this, go ahead, council, do your event Friday night and we'll see you there.
Thank you very much. Every year, it's sad, but everybody dies, there's people that die in the workplace incidents. This Saturday at the UCFW Hall on Lakeport, we'll be having a memorial toward them. Friday, yeah, Friday, I'm sorry, Friday, the 28th at 6:00 PM. And like everybody to come down there and just kind of remember who else passed away this last year. Thank you.
And that's at the UFCW yet?
UFCW Hall, 3028 South Lakeport.
3038.
3038 South Lakeport, go to South Lakeport, 3,000 block.
Okay, thank you.
Say that one more time, 3038?
3038, South Lakeport.
We'd love to see you guys there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, guys. Items 2 through 12 constitute an agenda that you can consider items passed unanimously unless a separate roll call votes asked for by a council member. Anybody wishing to speak on an agenda item may come to the podium at the time the item is being discussed. Anybody wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at the end of the regular meeting during Citizen Concerns. All speakers shall state their name and address for the record and then provide their statement. I'll move the consent agenda. Second. Two is a reading of the City Council minutes of April 17, 2023. Three is a motion acknowledging the Board of Adjustment actions of April 11, 2023. Four is a resolution supporting an IEDA application to the workforce housing tax credit program by Bertrand Construction. Five is a resolution adopting plans and specs for the Lewis and Clark Seating Replacement Project. Six is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Riverside Technology for desktops and monitors for the city PC replacement. Seven are actions relating to grants. A is a resolution authorizing a lead hazard reduction grant application. B is a resolution accepting this grant agreement for family self-sufficiency funding for the two FSS coordinator positions. C is a resolution authorizing an application for an air service sustainment grant to assist in the marketing efforts at the airport. D is a resolution authorizing a state funding application for an airport improvement grant for the airfield perimeter fencing project. E is a resolution authorizing a state funding application for a commercial service vertical infrastructure grant for the T hangar construction at the airport. F is a resolution authorizing applications for federal transportation assistance. G is a resolution approving an application for consolidated transit assistance. Eight are actions relating to street closures. A is a resolution temporarily closing various streets near Grandview Park, July 1st and 2nd, for the Saturday and the Park Festival. B is a resolution temporarily closing various downtown streets, July 22nd and 23rd, for the July Jam Outdoor Concert Event. Nine are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving a settlement agreement and release regarding personal injury claims. B is a resolution authorizing the overhead door reimbursement agreement with Hawthorne Global Aviation for the hangar door replacement project at the airport. C is a resolution approving a contract to KP Construction for the annual sidewalk ramp project. D is a resolution approving a contract to Sea Walson Contracting for the Lewis Park Park retaining wall project, replacement project. E is a resolution approving a contract to Mark Albonicious for the Lorraine and Avenue Sewer Point Repair Project. F is a resolution granting a permit to FiberCom to maintain underground cable in the area of Lewis Boulevard and 4th Street. G is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to Thompson Solutions for the water treatment plant elevator improvement project. I need to abstain from conflict of interest. H is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to Barclay Asphalt for the Hubbard Park Lot HMA Overlay Project. I am not on their board, but I do at least tell them, but I'm not going to abstain because that project needs to be done no matter what, whether they're there or not, so. I is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to Otis Elevator Company for the Martin Luther King Jr. Transportation Center Elevator Repair Project. G is a resolution approving a second amendment to the parking license agreement with Badril Development.
I had just a question about that and it's more for Dave and for Marty, or Chris, yes.
Yeah, I know.
Dave, I just wanted to touch base more with you, but then Chris can offer clarification if I need it. I just, and I should have messaged or called earlier and I apologize. Did we get everything ironed out that we had talked about in Public Works?
Yeah, yeah, they agreed to pay the lowest bulk rate versus that lower rate that they had, so they didn't have to have the minimum amount of parking spaces.
Okay.
But they're not paying every month.
That's what I was going to ask about.
They're still paying that deal where they pay a portion each month, I think it's $20, and then they pay the balance at the end of the year, which we're fine with because it still comes in one fiscal year then. But they're also not prorating any months either, which is also a benefit to parking.
So what happens next year?
Every year they pay.
No, nobody else has that deal.
Defer to them. That was in the original deal.
It was a condition that their, their financier, their lender asked for, and that was an amendment that was made. That's, that's not really the subject of this amendment. It's the, that amendment was made in September of '21, I believe. That was, that was the subject of the first amendment to the agreement.
Gentlemen, would you please identify yourselves for the recording?
Dave Carney, Public Works Director.
Chris Myers, Economic Development.
Well, I'm not a very smart guy. I admit that freely, but why, in a $21 million project, 130 stalls paying $25 later down the road is a make or break with their finance people? I got a really, really hard time understanding that.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's what they told us. And I guess at the time, we didn't think it was that big of a deal.
At the time, when we originally did it, they guaranteed us so many stalls. Now they don't really want to guarantee any stall.
Or we're getting, we're getting more, more than $10 for a month.
Yeah.
Yeah, for the ones that they're going to use. Yeah, they're just paying for the stalls that they.
Will utilize.
Yeah, that they will use.
And Chris, is that in their development agreement?
It's a separate parking license agreement, and that's, that's what this amendment is to. It's to the parking license agreement.
I would agree because it's going to be an accounting night for ABM to do it.
Because you're going to have people moving in and out.
And, and that's why we said there'd be no proration on it, so any part of the month, they pay a whole month's lease.
Right, and how are we going to track that?
Yeah, how do you check that they're, what, do they get a Bob or something to get in and out?
It's like everybody else, you all have a key card that lets them in and out of the garage. Or, but once they, they, you know, if they want to reduce a parking stall in the middle of the month, they're still going to pay a whole month, so.
I would just, all I would say, and I just wanted to make sure that the two departments, I think we're getting to a better agreement here, but just make sure that we coordinate more with that in the future. I think that that would be helpful, just so that everyone's on the same page, because I'm always thinking about the wear and tear on our ramps. And obviously, we want to make sure that it's as easy to track and that we know the rate that we're going to get, so I just think that would be helpful. So, I appreciate it. That's all. I just wanted that clarification. Thank you.
I'd like to pull this and vote on it. I don't, this is way too complicated. There should have been some other way to make it.
But we're only voting on the change from 172 per, I think.
That's why I still want to vote on it.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
No.
Chaner?
Aye.
Scott?
No.
Waters?
Aye.
Ten are actions authorizing payments. A is a resolution approving a fund transfer for March. B is a motion approving total expenses for March. 11 is applications for cigarette, tobacco, nicotine vapor permits. 12 are applications for beer and liquor license. And I'm not being critical of finance, Bob, but I want to see the accounting on this like quarterly, because I think it's going to be a nightmare for who's ever in charge of.
For the parking?
Yeah.
We'll have to, that's actually will be managed by ABM, but we can get reports from them.
Mayor on 12, is it B? 12B, 1E on Hard Rock.
12A, E?
12B, 1E. Not sure why it's a B, but.
The Hard Rock.
Hard Rock.
Okay.
12, 12B, 1E.
And on 9A, I would like to abstain.
Bennett?
Yeah, he's a close.
Oh, she did know. Okay. It didn't show up at first.
Passes 5-0. Appointments of boards and commissions and committees. A is, or 13 is a motion reappointing Dave J. Dorstner to the Civil Service Commission. I'll move that. Second. Passes 5-0. Recommendations of planning and zoning. 14 is a hearing ordinance vacating West Orange Avenue at 302 South Prescott Street. Petitioners, Kenny Kemper's, P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'll move that. Second. Public hearings now open. Mr. Gleiser, do you have anything for the good of the order?
Uh, no, listen, I'll close questions.
Hearings now closed. No one to be heard. Hearings now closed. Passes 5-0. Anybody opposed waiving the statutory rule?
No.
No.
I'll move that. Second.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Chaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
15 is an ordinance rezoning 60, I'm sorry, we've got to do third and second, that final reading. I'll move that. Second, second, third.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Chaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
15 is an ordinance rezoning 6130 Morton Avenue. The petitioner is, is Avenue East Apartments. P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'll move first reading. Second. Somebody answer this for me. It's a really tight site. And are you going to access through the church like they always have, or are they going to try to get their own curb cut?
It is my understanding that he's going to access through the church continuously, so. He's a wait till planner.
Okay, and is he going to build, is he going to remodel all these or tear some down?
From what he's told us is that he's going to remodel the current ones and possibly build one building.
Boy, that's going to be tighter than tight.
And it'll be like the one building plus the parking, it, it's going to be tight.
And we're okay with that, being that tight?
We haven't seen the plans from, from, at all yet either, as far as the additional building.
Gleiser?
They're, they're telling us five years.
I don't care how many years. It's, 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 I mean, I don't, I don't see how you put any more on that little bit. He didn't buy that much of that lot. So, how, I mean, does he give you an idea, three-story, four-story? Because that'll be totally out of character in that neighborhood.
We haven't seen anything. He said he was going to bring it to DRC here in the next couple of weeks, so it's.
I'm not going to vote to waive the statutory rule, because I'd like to see what that looks like on that site. So, I guess.
Is there anyone else to, to address it?
Huh?
Is there anyone else?
Anyone else to be heard? It's not a hearing, so it doesn't matter. I don't know why it isn't here.
And so are you going to request that at the next meeting then?
Yeah.
Have him there?
Yeah. Well, I don't care if he's.
I'm just not, well, or whoever, I'm just not sure if they have those plans or not.
Chris, managing planning, you could direct staff to bring the site plan back to you as well.
That's what I.
Well, we'll see, we'll see what he comes in with next week. And you, you think he's going to be there this next week?
We haven't heard how quickly that they're going to develop a site plan.
Well, we can hold off doing the third reading until we, we'll make that motion next week. I want to be here, heard on that here. Passes 5-0. 16 is a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the demolition of 722 Nebraska Street. I'll move that. Second. Public hearings now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes 5-0. 17 is a hearing and resolution approving plans and specifications for the well number two replacement project. I'll move that. Second. Hearings now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes 5-0. 18 is a resolution approving a contract to Triple D Contracting, pavement removal at 2501 Ogden Avenue. I'll move that. Second. Anyone to be heard? Passes 5-0. 19 is a resolution consenting to the location and installation of two license plate readers on US 77 Business 20 just prior to the I-29 ramps for South Sioux City. I'll move that. Second.
But question on that one.
Ed Mahon, Chief of Police, South Sioux City Police Department, 701 West 29th Street.
So it's my understanding, although these are going to be placed on the, on the Iowa side, we'll have no access to them. Is that correct?
No, that's really not correct. If the city or the chief police in Sioux City wants to join onto the computer portion of our program for FLOC, they can do so. Yes, currently at no charge. Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Be sure and tell Mr. Headquist how cooperative we were here today for the city of South.
I will mention that in about 45 minutes.
He sometimes forgets that. I want you to turn and remind him when you get.
I will do so. Thank you.
Thanks, Ed. Passes 5-0. 20 is the ordinance amending Chapter 13.08 Sanitary Sewer Rates to Increase Sewer Rates Effective July 1, 2023. First consideration approved, April 3, 2023, deferred from April 10, 2023, deferred from April 17, 2023. So we need a motion for second reading, but are we recommending a different rate structure? So what's your recommendation?
That's correct, Mayor. Tom Pingel, Utilities. We took a survey last week with the industries for their preferred alternative for the rate structure, and you'll see the, the new rate structure has been amended into the ordinance, so you guys would have to accept that amendment. And I could go over the details of those. The first six months, starting July 1 till the first of the year is a 5% increase. Then, July, or, yep, July 1 of 20, or sorry, then the beginning of the next year, it's a 25% increase rate until July 1, where it goes to 20%. And the next, FY '26 is another 20%, and FY '27 is 8.5%.
So it's basically just addressing what the mayor's concern was and some of the industry had brought up as far as, look, we've already established quite a bit of our budget and our books and we, you know, and added expense in the middle of the year is kind of challenging, so just trying to work or make that adjustment to where it's that 5% until January and then go on to the calendar year.
Yep.
That's correct. That's why it's a little more in that fourth year. It's a little more in that fourth year, the 8.5.
Correct, yep, yep.
Because of that.
Yep.
Adjustment, okay.
Mr. McGowan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Chris McGowan. I serve as the president of the Sooland Initiative. Our address is 101 Pierce Street. First and foremost, I would be remiss if I didn't thank the council for taking the occasion to listen to those in the business community who have legitimate concerns about where we're going with what is proposed as a half a billion dollar expense. As we've discussed, it's very front-end loaded. I've tried to have conversations with council when appropriate. I have been involved in meetings since we last met, and I think the most productive information that I have to share with you today is that I have spoken with the chairman of McClure just this afternoon, who has pledged to sit down with the business community and the city. He reminded me that he represents the city, and he has said that I would like to sit down with my team, with the Hazen team, with the representatives of the city and the business community, cooperate and collaborate to make sure that we have the support of all concerned before we move forward. The concern, as I have shared with many of you, is that our track record, independent of anybody involved at the council or with city staff at this time, as it specifically relates to wastewater, is one that we cannot unfortunately all look at and be proud of. Mistakes have been made. Significant mistakes have been made, and we're trying to avoid that going forward. I want to assure the council and, and to the city utilities director and those teams that we are not trying to stop this project. We recognize that a significant investment must be made in our wastewater to continue to have the opportunity for our current businesses to function properly, and also for us to have the economic development future that we all envision for our community. However, we also need to pause and make sure that we get this decision right. And so I would like the council to respectfully consider the offer that I'm making today after meeting, or after conversing, not meeting, with the chairman of McClure, to sit down with representatives of his firm, Hazen, the city staff, and the business community, to see if we can't all get on the same page as expeditiously as possible. I want to again underscore, no one is trying to say this is not a necessary investment. What we're trying to make sure of is that before we commit to a pay scale reflecting a half a billion dollars, that unlike in the past, and I'm sorry to have to bring that up, but our track record is not one that we should have confidence in, let's make sure that we do this right. And so that when we ask the council to vote, you do so with the full support of the business community. With that, I know that the mayor and I had a conversation about, well, what did that represent the last time the initiative paid for this research to be done? I have that study in my hand. I will tell you that I discussed it with the chairman today, and I said, this is what it reads. These are the numbers, and they are a fraction of what we had before. And he said, we need to sit down and go through that. A lot has changed since COVID. We certainly understand and respect that. Prices have gone up, but there needs to be an opportunity for the private and public sector to come together and to make sure that we're all on the same page and we get this right. I'd be happy to take any questions.
I, I guess I, I don't know if it would be a question of you or Mr. Washburn or whoever that would be, but I felt like McClure has been a part of this project or worked with us through this, so I didn't know how bringing one more representative of what that would bring to light or what we would hope to accomplish.
So, Councilman Waters, I would say this. As of today, you do not have the support of the major industrial users like you should have for this kind of an investment. We're trying to bring that along. We're trying to resolve those discrepancies. We're trying to resolve the, the anomalies that exist in a report that was published three years ago in May. Why is it a fraction of the cost then and it's a half a billion dollars now? I believe it's in everyone's interest for us to bring this to the council when you have the full and robust support of the business community and the major industrial users that say, we do understand, and let's figure this out. You're not there today, and we'd like to make sure that, that the city council, the staff, the engineers, and the major industrial users are on the same page. Respectfully, I think that's in everyone's best interest when we're talking about spending this kind of money. We're not talking about delaying this for months on end. We're trying to make sure that we get it right.
So, we need a motion on the floor to have a discussion. So, if I move the item, would it be an amendment to the second reading?
Correct.
To incorporate the staff's recommendations to go to the 5% for the first, or the second half of this year, and then 25% starting January 1, 2024?
Yes, for the industrial rates.
Okay, well, for purposes of having discussion, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Let me respond with a couple of things, Chris, and I really appreciated having the meetings with the industrial users. A lot of good out of that. And part of that is, in any event, I think moving forward, that they should be involved directly with the design process that we're talking about putting in place. But the other thing that has come to light for me.
But the other thing that has come to light for me, more so, that's making this move along a little bit quicker is the safety of the workers that we have at the facility. For all the reasons you've stated about failures we've had, our workers are at risk. And I don't like that. That's not acceptable. Not at all acceptable. We have to keep moving this project forward. We can do that by still having the meetings to consult with each other about that. The second thing that hasn't been mentioned, at least in the meetings I've been in, is a lawsuit that's been filed against the city in the spring of twenty twenty-one. That's real. That's not, that's not a threat. That is an actual lawsuit that we are facing as a city of Sioux City. And it makes it even more compelling to try to at least get a second reading accomplished, which is what the industrial users don't want. I'm clear on that, but I think they should be a part of the design process, and I think we can still have these meetings. But I don't want anything to happen on our watch with our workers. And I think, in my opinion, just in my opinion, not yours, not the mayor's, but in my opinion, I don't want anything to happen down there while we're having meetings and discussing. We can, we can still move forward, move forward at a very responsible speed.
So if I may respond, Mayor Protam, more. A couple of things. Number one, we agree with that. We don't want this crisis to adversely affect or jeopardize the safety of anyone. Okay? That goes without saying. In addition to that, when we rush, mistakes get made, and our track record is one in wastewater in particular, whether it's biogas or whether it's the hundreds of millions that we've already invested and we haven't seen that return, mistakes get made. I would point to our neighbors across the river, who I addressed in our first conversation a couple of weeks ago, and I cleared the air about where this city was and what their standing was. It was a commitment that I had made to some of you, and I did clear the air, and I said, here's what happened. But if we look at what happened, their history is not sterling either. And I'm not going to mention the name of the company, but they remain in litigation because they did not get that decision right. What I have asked for is an opportunity to meet with the director of the Iowa Economic Development Authority. I think some of you know that I've scheduled that for three o'clock or three thirty this Friday afternoon. We're also working on what can we do to petition our legislative delegation in Washington, DC to assist with this incredible expense when we've invested the kind of money that we've invested in infrastructure at the federal level. There has to be some hearing for one of the largest food processing communities in the entire United States to invest in their infrastructure for food safety and employee safety. We'd like the opportunity. You know that we're carrying that message on the seventeenth and eighteenth of May. It's not as fast as all of you would like. We understand that. But at this kind of expense, it would sure be nice if there were some state support and some federal support for one of the leading food processing, certainly the leading food processing community in the state of Iowa, but one of the leading in the entire United States. So with that, we're asking for the opportunity to further that dialogue and come back to you with a plan that people agree on and aren't arguing about the details over.
And I understand that, Chris, and I think we're very much on the same page. I agree with your comments, but I think we're going to have to do it simultaneously. I think we're going to have to do it in connection with that. I just am very concerned that if we delay, and I don't, and I don't think it has been necessarily a rush job. I'm not sure that's a fair criticism of what we have.
I didn't say it was. I think it is now. When you have the concerns of business coming forward, and we continue to advance this over their objections, then I think you have some serious concerns, especially when we're talking about a half a billion dollars, sir.
But their concerns are going to tie in nicely with, I think they should be an important component of the design process. Right now, we have workers at risk, in my opinion, and I just don't think we can, we can ignore that or delay it any more than what we have.
If you have workers at risk right now, they shouldn't be working there. If their safety is of that level of gravity.
Shut down the facility?
No, I'm not saying that, but I think you need to address what the shortcoming is without saying we're going to invest five hundred billion. We don't need to invest five hundred billion to protect worker safety.
I think we've worked well together. I think the mission we had initially with the industrial users is to try to get a payment schedule that was going to be something that they could, they could live. It still is there that we have to do something. I don't like it any better than, my friend, Mr. Skinner, I don't like it any better than the industrial users that are having difficulty with this. It's a very, very delicate, very important project that has to be decided. And we have the law, and no one has ever mentioned me the lawsuit. I'm saying it out loud. We have been sued spring of twenty twenty-one, and that's a very serious lawsuit that's pending.
Dan, I agree. The bottom line is, we're trying to make sure, for all concern, the council, the taxpayers, the residents, and the business users, that we get this one right, and our history is unfortunately checkered in the area of wastewater.
But as we delay, correct me if I'm wrong, I stand to be correct on a lot of things. If I'm, if I'm mistaken, any further, if we move and we need to move forward in a responsible way, we can start making some of those corrections of the deficiencies that are out there. We can still address those. I don't want to sit and wait while we're trying to get everybody on board, which I'm not sure we can do. At least if I were a major industrial user, I'd, I'd have concerns about it. If we're going to shut down my business, I would still have concerns about it. But I think we need to come together, and we need to do it by continuing to move forward. I just don't think we can proceed with delay of any kind at this point, and I don't think mistakes will be made because you still have the design. The design hasn't even been started, and isn't, I mean, that seems to be a critical component of whether we're going to get it right this time.
Right. I agree, and I think that we need to move forward. We can always adjust if we find that it can be constructed or reconstructed at a lesser amount. And we keep talking about the half a billion dollar mark, and it's not really a half a billion. We're planning to build phase one and phase two. Phase three is if there's future need, if we have another industry come into town, a large one, that we can't service. So we're looking at three hundred million for phase one, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tom and Teresa, and then another hundred and seventy million for phase two. So four hundred and seventy million is still a lot, but that's where we're at, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So we're a little bit under that, and I agree. We need to continue to move forward. We have hired the best to have our back so we don't have another hiccup, so we don't have another debacle, to ensure that this gets done correctly. Well, the city's invested a lot of money to have the best in the country figure this out for us and give us the direction that we need, and I feel confident in them, in Hazen. I don't know why suddenly there's no confidence in them, but as far as myself and what staff has given me for information, I feel confident in them.
Julie, I'm confident in them too. The problem is, and the reason that we're asking for time, is because the report that I have in my hand from three years ago.
And we would like to talk about that. We would like to dispel the notion that that report is similar to our.
Come on, come on. I've been really running over with sewer stuff the last two weeks. We're going to talk one at a time. He had the floor, Mr. Pingle. Please allow them to talk.
I apologize, Mr. McGowan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to assure you, I am not here in an adversarial role. I have a twenty-year track record with the chamber and the initiative, acting in the best interest of my hometown. Nothing has changed. What I'm trying to urge the council to do is to work with business and industry to tap the brakes and to make sure that we get this wastewater decision correct. I don't care if it's five hundred million. I don't care if it's four hundred and seventy million. I don't care if it's three hundred million. It is a huge expense that will be borne by business, residential, and taxpayers, and they deserve that we get this right, and unfortunately, that's not been our track record.
Go ahead, Tom.
If the council would like, we could talk about the difference between the studies that.
Yes, I would like to hear about that because we have very strong feelings both ways. That the two hundred million dollar design from three years ago was supposed to be an all-encompassing new plant. It was going to take load, flow, residential, commercial, industrial. It was going to take all of it, but we were under the understanding that that wasn't the case. So which is it?
Mr. Washburn, would you like to explain that?
Michael Washburn, McClure Engineering Company, six seventeen Pierce Street. McClure completed a study for the initiative in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. It was led by the initiative. And at that point in time, South Sioux was still evaluating what they were going to do, and their industries needed more capacity, and they were trying to figure out what to do with Big Ox. So our study, what came out of that, the recommended approach was to build a small, smaller satellite wastewater plant south of town that would treat the three industries from South Sioux City and then a portion of Sioux City's flow out of the York Lift Station. So roughly seven million gallons per day, and it was designed to treat mainly industrial waste. Okay, so lower flow, high strength. Meanwhile, the existing Sioux City plant would have to continue to operate well into the future to treat the waste from the rest of the community.
And everything.
Yes.
For higher flow.
And there would be two plants, there would be two plants that would have to be operated. And when we did that analysis, that was the recommended strategy moving forward. South Sioux made their decision to build their own treatment plant, and that took away pretty much all of the flow and load that that plant would receive, and that plan basically, basically died at that point.
Which is why then, if I remember correctly, we were approached to make the difficult decision of whether we build an entirely brand-new plant south of town, maybe similar to where that one was proposed, or whether we retrofit the current plant to this level, and it was basically calculating a billion dollars versus where we are today with the four seventy. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Or is that accurate?
That's correct.
And Tom, at one point, and I don't remember what the number is, maybe you do, when the first touring and assessment was made of our current plant, thinking forward of building the second or the ancillary plant that was going to go with it, the satellite plant, was that an in-depth, I mean, kind of really peel back the onion on the plant as our plant was operating? Because it seems as though it's in horrible condition still, you know, as what it was three years ago.
Now, I will say, three years ago, it was in a lot better shape than it is today.
Uh-huh. So we thought it would continue.
Yep, just because of the nature of corrosion as it happens. It happens faster and faster and faster till the end.
Because of the high level of load that goes to it.
Correct.
And then how many engineers have looked at it, do you know, on the Hazen team? How many have they had come in and inspect this? Because at first they thought, it's done. We're not going to be able to rebuild it. You're going to probably have to go new.
Yep.
But then.
They spent maybe about a week there at the plant.
Yeah, there was, there was a team of at least ten or twelve engineers that spent a week.
I was thinking it was twelve, but I didn't want to say the number.
There was a lot more in-depth analysis of the current plant with this current study.
Right, right.
And the last question I had before I know Mr. McGowan and maybe Mr. Skinner have something, I just wanted to ask, when, when did we first approach or talk about this structure or when was industrial users notified?
Of the current, the facility plan now? They were officially notified in January when they were invited to the meeting, so the meeting would have been the notification, the official notification.
Because I agree with Mr. McGowan. I don't want, well, and the mayor, I didn't want to act any in haste or last minute or anything. I just wanted to know when the initial, when the discussion started.
As soon as the, the, the alignment of what the council kind of agreed to, what set, the rate structure was set, that's when we notified the industries. I want to apologize for interrupting, Mr. McGowan.
Apology accepted. Thanks, Tommy. The document that I'm holding in my hand is a plan of action Sooland Wastewater Treatment Strategy by McClure and Hazen dated May eighth of twenty twenty. The executive summary reads, and bear with me for a moment, because this is what I'm urging you to make sure that we get right. Presented in this report are seven alternatives for treating the wastewater loadings that are forecasted over the next ten to twenty years in the Sooland region. It provides a comprehensive solution that includes building a new state-of-the-art wastewater treatment plant at a remote southern location and doing only minor repairs at the existing aging Sioux City wastewater treatment plant. The new remote south plant will reduce or eliminate odors that have plagued the area for years. It sets the stage for all wastewater treatment to be moved to a remote location well south, well south of the region's communities. This concept is identified as scenario five B and is illustrated as exhibit ES one. This scenario keeps all wastewater contributors as stakeholders together. Now, I'm going to, I'm going to read a little deeper into this letter because it says, at the time of this writing, at the time of writing this report, South Sioux City is proposing to spend thirty-eight to forty-seven million to build their own separate industrial wastewater treatment plants. So this was not a shock to anyone, but it was something that we didn't know the ultimate resolution. And as I said in my first presentation to you a couple of weeks ago, I called them out for what, what had transpired. In this document, the cost is estimated at one hundred and forty-two point five million, of which thirty-seven point three million is already programmed to be spent by Sioux City and built into their projected sewer rates. The anomaly between these numbers is what we're asking to sit down with McClure, with Hazen, with city staff, with representatives of the major industrial users and say, folks, there's a misunderstanding here, but it is in all of our interest to get this right, and that's all I'm respectfully requesting.
Doug Skinner, Bridgeport Truck Wash, also representing the major industrial user group at large. We've been meeting several times over the last couple of weeks. And I will say, I will start off by saying, I've probably had more productive talks with staff, with Tom, with Teresa specifically, in the last couple of days when they responded to the questions that I asked council last week. I put those in writing for Tom, and he, and he gave me a very detailed document back. And what I do want to point out, though, is, and some of us will be followed up, will follow what Chris was saying. There's just, every time we ask questions, we get good answers, but it opens up more questions. I now understand the timing. I now understand why July first is important, and quite frankly, I don't, I don't disagree with it. And I think the, I think the proposal, the five percent, solves the July first issue. Is that correct, Stately? You can submit for your permit because you've got a rate structure in place to support your loan.
Five percent does not support the loan. We need the rate structure in place that'll show us supporting the loan that.
No, I'm not saying just the five percent, but I'm saying that gets you in.
Correct. Yes, to get this started.
Teresa Fitz, Finance Director. All that does is allow us to get on the IUP for the SRL loan. It allows us to appear that we have a rate structure in place that's not too far down the road, and we would want to put a rate structure in place that would be those, that full four years.
Still want to hang these guys rather than let the next council make the decision, but I get it.
So, and that's the conversation Teresa and I had this morning. So my question is, well, I guess did that answer the question? So it gets us in line, but it doesn't mean that can't be amended or changed later.
Correct.
The rate structure.
So all the rate structure does is basically says, we can now borrow four hundred and seventy million dollars plus interest. So it actually is over half a million when you add in the hundreds of thousands of interest, but how, what is that process for changing it down the road? My concern is, you know, once you show the capacity to pay for it, you, you kind of give up your ability to ask for money because you don't really need it, and.
I can, I can respond to that on truth pitch again, the finance director. The SRL loan is a drawdown basis. So if we don't draw down on it, we, we can close the loans. If we, if we get a loan for four hundred and seventy million dollars between the two loans, we determine that the funding is not necessary, we only draw what's necessary, and then we close the loan. So we don't, we don't draw the full amount if we don't need it, and that has happened at times where the estimates have come in or that actuals have come in lower than the estimates. So we certainly would not borrow anything more necessary.
And I completely understand that, but if, if we go down the road with a scope that may or may not be one hundred percent accurate, I'm just giving an example, okay? I've heard several people in this room say, we have to plan for growth. We have to build capacity in the plan, right? The current fund analysis for the Sewer Utility Fund has a thirty-four percent reduction in the next two years in major industrial user load or revenue. So we've already built into thirty-four percent loss. So how much additional revenue do, are we going to have a fifty percent increase after we lose the thirty-four? So I mean, I just, I think it's the scope that industry wants to sit down and say, well, let's talk about the scope, because presented, the way it was presented, and I remember the survey, I filled it out myself a couple of years ago. If they, if I'd have been told at the time of that survey, oh, by the way, your rates are going up two hundred and twenty-seven percent, I would have answered differently, the pre-treatment question. The pre-treatment question. Which, by the way, I'm in the middle of right now, anyway. But not, not every industry is. You know, I think we ask that question again, we get an industry in the room, we're not talking about a lot of people, that make up the majority of the industrial flow, right? Let's get them in a room, let's talk about real growth, talk about real expenses, there's got to be a solution here. But once you, once you spend that four hundred and seventy million dollars on whatever the scope is, you can't unspend it. So if we do lose a bunch of flow, what if, what if the plant actually gets their way? And a bunch of industry pretreats? And the, and the industry load is cut in half? You still got to pay the loan back, right? Who, who's going to pay it? The remaining people, who are going to pay it. So these rates, in my opinion, my concern is, the rates that have been presented, are now amended, but prior were thirty, twenty, twenty-seven, seven percent increase the next five years, those are minimums. Those only pay the bills if, if the load doesn't change. If the load doesn't change and revenue goes down, the public utility still needs the revenue to cover the loan. I mean, this is a serious concern.
And, and I asked the similar question that you did, Mr. Skinner, and I think it's a good question that needs to be asked. And the first part of that is consistent with what I was told, and what I was trying to understand. But you're carrying that to a, a next level, and I don't know if we have an answer, if we can have an answer today on, on that, but that's something we want to look at. Once it's committed, once the dollars are committed, and the pre-treatment lessens the capacity, I just, I want to make sure I understand what you're asking, the capacity lessens, we still have to pay for the facility that we've-
I'm saying, once the money's spent. I think it's committed, you can pull it-
Or once it's, yeah, once it's-
Once it's spent, you can't unspend it. You can sell land off, and you can right-size your labor force, you can sell the equipment. You can't undo spent money.
So what's that due to our rate structure in the future? I think is what, what Mr. Skinner's asking. Or how would that impact it?
Yeah. Unfortunately, if it did go down that road, like Mr. Skinner's saying, you know, other industries would have to cover that. We're in a rock between a hard spot, you know? We, we, we have to put the money into this plant that requires us to keep, or at least minimally increase the capacity. The DNR is not going to let us derate the facility, based on speculation. So what we're doing is what the, the Iowa DNR and the EPA are asking of us, is to build it the right size, according to growth and speculation, which there's not much growth, or speculation of growth, in Sioux City at this time. So we're building it as we need to, as required by the DNR. And hopefully, if we do get some more capacity, that'll allow our economic development team to recruit harder and bring in some more industries.
But Tom, that would, I mean, that could still affect the rates in the future, ten years out, couldn't it? Where the rates aren't even increased? We don't have a seven percent automatic increase, it's a, it's zero. I don't know if that's answering your question, but I mean, it's, in theory, it could be zero increases for a number of years.
Could be.
Could be.
No. Not based on their numbers, just to service the debt. To your point, let me give you an example. At the end of this year, this is again, per the city's budget, the ending cash balance in the fund will be six point six million dollars. That will balloon to twenty-six million dollars during the construction process of the facility. So we're going to be sitting on twenty-six million dollars, in preparation for a fifteen million dollar PNI payment, the next year. After that PNI payment, due to all the increases, now we're still sitting on twenty-two million dollars. So we've taken, after we've made the first significant payment, we're still sitting on twenty-two million dollars of industry's money.
And look at the fifth year, Doug, because you're down to four hundred and thirty-two thousand, I saw the same thing you did. Cities that don't have a reserve have a problem. And, and we better to have that reserve in there, because we're required, according to treaties with the SRF, to have that. So you may think that's too much money, but I don't care what you think, and I don't care what you think, I care about where we're borrowing the money, at about five percent less money than what we would borrow anywhere else. That's what's important, is to make sure you honor the treaties that they have before you. And you can't deny that that's not a requirement.
I, that I'm not denying at all. What, in fact, year nine-
That's why, that's why that's twenty-two million.
Absolutely, I, I'm on board. In year nine, yeah, in year nine, we get down to four hundred and twenty-eight million dollars, which, we're way out of loan covenant by then, I get that. But what industry's asking for, is whether it's thirty, twenty, twenty-seven, seven, or ten, 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 thirty, twenty, right? If, if we can sit down and look at the order of the increases-
I don't think anybody's opposed that. I, I, you know, I don't know how this became such an adversarial deal, and you guys can tell me it didn't on both sides, but you can ask a question around here, and not have somebody get upset. And I don't have to have help doing that, I can do that really well on my own, okay? I've got, the city managers really not inclined to have, to be very cheery with me today. Tom's been upset with me, Mike Colette's been upset with me, a couple council members have been upset with me. I just want to have questions like you do, and like they do, and somehow, we are not communicating very well, and quite frankly, I'm getting a little bit tired of it. I went on my own, I asked some questions, I called Tom Ruse for the IDNR, the city attorney advised me not to do that, and I told her I would be careful, because what the heck, I'm already getting sued, what's, what are they going to do? Pile on, you know, what, you know? And they tell me that we are complying with what they would like. Why in the world you guys couldn't get a letter from him stating that is beyond my wilde? He was very nice to talk to. So, I, I'm really, you know what? I'm glad we found three million dollars in ARPA funds, because the most important thing to me today is not whether you're right or you're right, the most important thing to me is fixing some things that need quick attention, and we better to have them quick, because the safety of the employees of this city are the most important thing to me. I'm kind of anal when it comes to safety. So you've got three million dollars, and I hope we don't sit around here and say, I wonder how we ought to spend that, when you've got a laundry list of stuff that should be done. That's the most important thing to me. This other stuff, even if we pass a rate increase, if, if that ends the discussion around here, I'm going to be terribly, terribly disappointed, because that's not the way we ought to do business. And, and we ought to be a lot more open, and not, not adversarial, not getting your feelings hurt, because somebody's asking questions. This is the largest project that will ever come before this city. There will never be a project like this again. And to think that these engineers have all the answers, and just like, I pointed out, one little deal, and of course, that's just a conceptual plan, but when you give it to engineers, Mr. Carney, I know, I know you're not going to like this, but when you give it to engineers, they don't listen. It becomes their plan, then, and you don't get to have a lot of input. And I, I'll be so disappointed if that's the case, that these guys can't have input, that the general public can't have input. I'm going to be really upset if that's the case. And that's why I'm going to abstain today, because I don't think either side, I, I only care about the safety of the employees. I'm not going to vote no today, because I want to make sure they're protected, that, but I'm not going to vote yes either, because I, I don't think we've done a very good job.
Mayor and Council, can I speak?
Yeah.
Real quickly. First of all, I would like to think that the mayor and I are still on cheery terms. I am, I don't know.
Anybody got a recording in that meeting Friday?
Staff's commitment, we said it on Friday when we met with a couple of council members, and I think I've shared it with all the other council members, is to include major industry as we begin the design process. We are more than happy to help, have people help us find savings where possible. We only want to borrow what is absolutely needed to meet the requirement as set out by the state. If we come back, and the four hundred and seventy million dollars is four hundred million, we're more than happy to adjust rates to, just to meet what we need to borrow. But we don't want to wait, and lose our opportunity to keep moving on this, for various reasons. But we're more than happy to, to include anybody and everybody that wants to participate in the design process.
Skinner? I wanted to ask you, I'm pleased to hear you did get answers to those questions that you had, and they may not all be to your satisfaction, and we haven't discussed that between us, but, but you did get answers, and I appreciate that. Are you as confident as I think I am, that we can actually sit down and make some progress on this in the next several weeks, and still have our second reading, still have our third reading, and, and proceed on some of the bases of what's been said earlier? I mean, I am, you, you've been great to work with, and I'm not just saying that. You've been very transparent, you've been very candid, you know I don't read between the lines very well, so you talk to me, and I like that, I appreciate that. So, I, I think that can continue with you and with others, and I'm-
I'm sorry.
Oh, no, so I'm, I'm hoping we can do that, and still have this part of it. I don't disagree with the mayor on his comments about how this has come together, but, but really, I, I mean, we're, for me, we're at crossroads. I don't want to do anything that's going to alienate you, or make it adversarial, I'm not in it for that, I'm in it for finding the right thing to do. And I think we can do that concurrently with the, with how we're proceeding on this.
This, this may come as a surprise, but I feel better right now than I did last Monday. After I got the information, after I talked to some city staff, I feel confident that the business community, we're all business people, we understand, there's real costs to run a real business. And I certainly hope that the safety of the, of the treatment plant people does not revolve around what we're doing in this room. I hope we're solving their safety problems outside of this decision, I think. Right? So I don't want to, I don't want to put that on the table as somehow holding this up. We don't want, I don't want to hold up safety. But no, I'm confident that given just a little time, we can solve both issues, we can get in line, and, and for the fund, and industry can have a better idea of how we went from whatever it was before, to four hundred and seventy million now, and we can get some real ideas on real loading numbers. It's a small group in the major user industrial group, that makes up seventy-five percent of the load. It wouldn't be a big thing to pick up the phone and call, right? We could do that. And, and I'll take that on, okay? But yes, I'm very confident, that given just a little bit of time, we can get this thing solved. Not, not the final design, but I think we can solve the timing issue with a July submittal, and I think we can at least build a, a, a structure that industry has a seat at the table, when these decisions are being made. And frankly, that's what was missing in January and March, from those meetings, there was no seat at the table.
And I think we can too, and I want to thank Mr. McGowan, because all he ever asked of me as an elected official is, will you listen? And I think I've listened, and I think I've heard what you said. We don't always, just because we might disagree on some points, doesn't mean I didn't hear you. That might make it worse, because you're saying, well, you still disagree with me, and you've, you've heard my reasoning. But I get your rationale, I understand it, and it's helped me a lot. So I, I feel better myself, and I'm glad to hear you say that, and I, and I truly mean that, Mr. Skinner.
But, but are we sitting here today saying, if, if the second and third readings get passed, those really aren't the rates?
They'll be established by, by ordinance as the rates, but there's nothing that says they can't come back and be changed at a future date.
What I'm, what I'm concerned with is that we do our second and third readings, these are the published rates that would be in effect. I want to make sure we keep this dialogue going, as if it's, it, we had to have it done yesterday.
And, and that's my concern, that once they're published, what's the mechanism to really go back and say, mm, are those the right numbers?
Tom, we're going to have that discussion. Michael, we'll continue to have these discussions, won't we? Even though the rates are published.
Yeah, I mean, there's a design, there's a process to go through, there's a design process, right? And then budgets get updated, design criteria can be adjusted.
But I mean, even relating to Mr. Skinner's questions about how all of this comes together, how this works, still maybe just, and Tom, just trying to clear the air on the past studies that have been done, what those mean, how they tie in with what we have today. We can make that commitment. Once, if you get a second and third reading, I don't want you to go away, because then we're all going to be in trouble. And I don't want Mr. Skinner to go away. And Mr. McGowan?
As I said the first time I appeared before you, I asked you to tap the brakes, to pause, so the business could come to the table and have this dialogue. I share Mr. Skinner's sentiments, that there is a path forward. I think that path forward is one that represents cooperation, collaboration, and communication. I do believe that having the chairman of McClure with us, who has pledged to come personally and sit down, and help us understand the discrepancies between this document from three years ago, and what is being proposed today. However, I do believe that it is in all of our interest to say, take your thirty days. A week or two ago, at this podium, I asked, why the June 1 or July 1 deadline? Does it come from IDNR or EPA? No, it's self-imposed. So why are we pushing so hard, so fast, on what the mayor just described as the single biggest expense this city will ever confront?
Any other questions?
No.
Did anyone else be heard?
Could I, well, may I ask one thing under discussion? Do any of the council members have, I guess I just need to know, do you support having industrial users, a, an important component of the design process? Once we get over the hurdle of past studies that have been done, what the rates are, how that affects everything, in the design process itself, are, are you comfortable having industrial users as part of that process?
I'm comfortable in keeping the communication open, yes, but I'm not sure if the industrial users are designers.
Well, but to get their input.
Yes, to get their input, absolutely.
Because they're users of it. I, you know, we're, we're not, I mean, we're residential users, but we're not. Not to the extent that Mr. Skinner is, not to the extent that-
Sure.
Yeah, but with all due respect, we have a greater insight into what our flows and loads are going to be. You're not operators, and we're not designers. We're operators. So I think, we have a huge part of what goes into the design process, and that is the volume.
Right, but as do the city, they know what you're flowing and what's coming in.
They have no idea what I'm, with all due respect, they have no idea what I might do next year.
No, not what you're doing next year, but they know what you've done in the past, and what you're doing today.
Right, and just, I mean, as an example, and just to be fair, I'm in the middle of installing a pre-treatment system at Bridgeport. Okay? Our first reading, our first samples are, we reduce TSS fifty percent, and oil and grease fifty percent. That's with one chemical running, and the system running at half-capacity. They have, they have, I mean, I turned in a plan, and they approved the plan, but they don't know what that means to next year's budget, and the year after that, but I do. I know what that does to my budget. Everybody in industry knows what that does to their budgets. That's why we need to be at the table.
And I didn't say you didn't need to be at the table, I said that you're not a designer.
With all due respect, I'm not a designer. But I, but I think I own my, you know, my flow, and frankly, I'm, I'm more of an expert at that than anybody in the room. And without that, you can't design, the designers can't design the plant correctly, if they don't know my-
Correct, that's why, again, I agreed with that, but Dan's question was, can you be a designer of the plant? And I said, probably not, they probably have the information.
Can they be at the table with the, when we do the-
I think his question's at the table.
Tom, you probably could state a lot better than I can, but you know what I'm saying, we want the industrial users at the table, when we're talking about the design of the facility.
Yeah, I agree with that.
There could be all different kinds of components, just what you brought up.
Correct.
Yep.
I just want to make sure we're, we're on the same page of that, so that, you know, because the mayor, rightfully so, said, you know, this hasn't really come together the smoothest way, we're all accountable for that, to a certain extent. So going forward, let's just keep it going like we have been. I, I mean, not like we have been, but like we intend to do-
Better have been.
Going forward, after today. I mean, I think, I think we can, I'm sorry.
No, I would just answer his question. I'm committed to that as well. I want to make sure that as many voices are at the table as possible, I think that that's important. I think we need to have representation, at least on our behalf, or city staff behalf, whether it's their acting in that way, I mean, for residents. You know, I mean, I've said since the very first reading of this, that I think that's a component that is also out of, out of the conversation, or left out, is the rate that's going to be passed along to our residents, that's significant as well. But I do think that major industrial users need to be at the table to at least have an open dialogue about what's expected, what we're looking at, what we're up against, what needs to be done forward. Now I say that, and that's probably how I would have responded, all before your last statement, which also brings up a very interesting point, where the worry that you have is you're in the business of making money. you're in the business of making money. These large industries are in the business of making more money. So, we also have to be cautious that the discussions and the input and the advice given by major industrial users isn't disingenuous to say, oh, we need to do this, oh, you need to do this, we should make this capacity, we should do this. And then you just cut bait and say, well, never mind, I did a full pre-treatment, I start next month. We no longer have this flow, and I convinced you to do that. I mean, I just, I'm not saying you would, but I just thought it brings up an interesting point in your last statement, is all I'm saying.
Right, and to be fair, the opposite is actually the point I was making. And I'm very concerned that these rates are the minimum, and when the desired outcome of industry pre-treating happens, the rest of the industry, including those that pre-treated, are going to pay the price. So, you know, I'm investing, and I'm investing in pre-treatment, and because of that, so does everybody else. Our reward is higher rates than we're already talking about, because there's less revenue. So, it's the opposite. It's, I mean, there'd be no reason for me to say, oh, build capacity that I don't want to use, because I know who's paying for that.
And I was just talking through my thought process, that it's like, we just all have to make sure that we're on the up and up and understand what the other one is working on and how to get to the end goal.
No, I agree, and I sincerely hope my integrity is not on trial here today.
Oh, gosh, no, that's not what I was implying.
Okay.
But Councilman Waters, please make note of the fact that with rates scheduled to go up over 100% in the next five years, now, that's a different schedule than residential. Why? Because we're asking business to bear the cost of this expense. I'm wrong?
For a long time around here, we made a decision years ago, I was here, that jobs were an important component of this community, and that we would charge residential a little more than their percentage so that we could attract industry. So, that's not the case.
The rates are not disparate?
I just said the rates before this new rate increase were slanted higher for citizens to try to make it advantageous for business to do business in this community. So, that's why residential is experiencing a shorter rate increase than business, but it's to equalize where it probably should have been the last 30 years.
So, I appreciate that. I don't think I'm stating anything that's incorrect, you're giving me the reasons for that disparity. So, I appreciate that. But I do want to caution that when the rates are scheduled, published to go up over 100% in five years, you are compelling business to look at pre-treatment. They have to, it's the responsible thing to do. And we don't know what that impact is going to be, or how many of them choose to do that, and who gets left paying those revenues. That is why we're saying we need to walk before we run. Thank you for listening. I do appreciate the opportunity to visit with many of you, and I remain committed, like everyone else in this room, we are not on opposite sides of this. We're all trying to get to the same place, and do so to make sure that what we invest in represents the best value proposition for our citizens, our taxpayers, our residents, our businesses, all concerned. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to call for the question now, we're voting. Passes four to zero, I abstain not because of a conflict of interest.
Could you please clarify what that vote entailed? Was that the second reading, or was that a delay?
Second reading. Second reading, as amended with the change in the proposed rates.
IBP Ice Center Locker Room Expansion Project.
Matt Salvatore, Parks and Recreation Director. Kirk Lukart is here to give a follow-up update on the locker room expansion project. He was here over CIP budget hearings, and he's here with some follow-ups. So, I'll turn it over to Kirk.
Kirk Lukart, representing Sioux Land Youth Hockey. At the previous meeting I attended, I indicated that we were going to go out and get a more current estimate for the expansion project at the IBP Ice Center. We've done that. FEH and Associates has put together a new estimate that's come in about $200,000 higher than what we were before. We're at about $1.8 million right now. Unfortunately, I've seen that number go from 1.4 to 1.6 to 1.8. But saying that, the $200,000 increase, we have now whittled down to a gap of $149,000. At the end of this meeting, I'm going to ask the council to go ahead and approve us moving forward with bidding the project. Some notes I put together, some things I know, the estimate that was put together by FEH was done so with the help of several contractors in town, so we feel very good about the number that's been put in front of us. Both those contractors have slots available where they can work the project in and get the project enclosed by winter. Things I believe, I think once the bids are awarded, excuse, once the bids are put out and awarded, our fundraising so far has really been kind of a targeted fundraising. We haven't had a public campaign yet, but we've raised about $1.67 million on this targeted fundraising. Again, we believe that once we go public with this and start the capital campaign within the community, that we'll close that $149,000 gap rather quick. Secondly, in that $1.8 million, while we wouldn't count this, there is $103,000 in contingency money in the estimate. This project is quite frankly, a fairly simple project, and it would be our hope that we don't use all of that contingency money, contingency money, which also helps us get to our final outcome. So, any questions you have, I'll be happy to answer.
Is there any simple explanation why FEH is saying, you know, that it has gone from, did you say 1.2 in the beginning?
They and the contacts are simply saying it's cost of material, cost of labor, you know. When we started this project back at almost the beginning of COVID, we were at $1.4 million. We got our fundraising to $1.4 million, we had to get a new estimate, it was 1.6. It's just been the same thing.
Right, and it just continues to...
Supply chain and cost and materials and labor, and most of the contractors in town have been awfully busy. It's nice to know that there's a couple of them that can find slots for the project. So, again, we'd like to ask the council to allow us forward with the bid process.
And I'm confident too, once you open up a public capital campaign, I think you're going to get that deficiency, I really do.
We're pretty excited. You know, even more so, if you read the paper, there's been some real exciting things within the program. You know, several years ago, obviously, the high school team won a national championship. This past year, the high school team won the state tournament.
They did, yeah.
And recently, our girls program finished second in the nation in a national tournament. So, we'd really love to get the girls out of the old office and into the locker room.
Into the locker room would be nice, yes.
Can you clarify exactly what you're asking?
We're asking the council, however the process works, we're asking the council for approval to get with FEH and start the pre-bid process and take the project out to bid.
Is there an agenda item then that would come before us?
The design contract would need to be let, and then the public improvement process to let the contract through the public bidding contract, or process that the council would have to formally approve, is my understanding.
FEH would start working with the city staff to...
Yeah, so just to clarify, the project has been completely designed, it's just a matter of getting it on the agenda for the public bidding process. It was on the city, last year at one point, it was on the agenda for an adopt, and we took a step back because the gap was a little bit more significant. So, this would be restarting that public bidding process.
Did the city approve a design contract with FEH?
That was, that's their design contract.
Sioux Land Hockey Association.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
How soon will that be back on the agenda then?
We could get it, it'd just be a matter of probably three or four weeks. Yeah.
Reason why we would not?
The only reason, the last time was the shortfall.
If they come up short, you've got to fund the money until they can raise it.
You don't have to award the bids though either. You wouldn't have to accept bids.
No, if it comes in at 2 million or something.
You've got the ability to reject bids.
Right.
Okay.
I'm for one, and for the project, but I don't know where the rest of you are. I think it's a, nobody saw girls hockey like when you built that facility, but you cut corners back then because you had...
And I did this, what, 27 years ago?
We did. And we cut corners back then because you had to, I get that, but now, construction costs on this are not going to go down.
No, they're not.
And, you know, the girls should have the same opportunity as the boys. It's ridiculous that they don't have a locker room.
Well, those of you that have been down there know what we do to...
Nothing to vote on here, it'd just be direction from council to staff.
If it's legal, I think it's fine.
It would come back for the three-step process in front of the council.
I'll stay with that too.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Citizen concerns, anyone want to be heard? Come to the microphone, state your name and address. I would like you to keep it to three minutes if at all possible after everything else that went on today.
You or something?
Yeah, come on up. Name and address, please.
My name's Mark Baker, I live at 1700 West First. This is the third year I've come to ask about my curbs. I see they just did all of our assessments and stuff, and then about a week later, I got a certified letter from the city saying I can't park my vehicle in my yard where it would be done if I would have the curbs and stuff done. And also, the other part I wanted to ask you about was, what happened to the Lions Park project? Did that just get dropped? Because we have, that was part of the, part of the thing with the city, and I was told by Ed Pickens three years ago, that with or without the project, I have a half-inch curb in front of my house, and I'm on the downside of the street, so when it rains, I get all the, it rains in my yard, which is a big mud puddle. So, I was just kind of...
Marty, that's your project, because it's community development, right? Can you get his phone number, get him some answers right away? There should be money in the budget.
Yeah, we are, Lions Park project is continuing on, Jill Wanderside's working on that. I can get your name and get back to you.
Okay, because the last time I talked to Jill, she said they didn't have any money left.
Oh, no.
And we've called, I've called about a couple times, because two years ago, I had a guy jump the curb, I mean, I'm not very far from the curb as it is, and just missed my house.
I don't think we're out of money in that.
No, it's annually funded, so that's going to go on for a number of years. That's what I thought.
I was just, like I said, the last time I talked to her, she said they were...
They might have spent...
What they had for that year.
It's an annual program for a long... Yeah, yeah, we'll be there for a while.
Okay, and then the third thing I want to complain about is, we must have a new code enforcement officer on the west side, because she was, everybody in my block got a letter, but the business behind me didn't get a letter, I'm going to guarantee you, because that's John Roos, uh, uh, business back there, it looks like a dump. So, we've all been, you know, doing what we're supposed to do, whatever.
We'll make sure Mr. Roos gets a letter too, if he hasn't.
And there's a, the fourth thing was, the church on West First Street, the 1700 block, it's been missing a corner in the basement, was red-tagged about six years ago, and it's still there with no, there's no, it's open, you can walk right to the basement of that building.
Will you get Daryl on that? I'll get, I'll get, let's meet after here, and I'll get your answers for you.
Okay.
All right, thanks, appreciate it. Anybody else?
First of all, I want to thank Matthew O'Kane for the nice comments last week. Dan, thank you for getting me the subcontractor list. I received the subcontractor list last Friday. I'm not sure how that happened, but I received it on Friday. So, tonight, I just want to clear up a couple of things. First, I want to say congratulations to Suter Company from Sioux City, Iowa, for being awarded the LEC, the Law Enforcement Center project. You are an excellent, local, well-established company, whose reputation in the industry of quality and workmanship, in my opinion, should be rated top five in the country. You're an excellent local company with many, many certifications and awards of excellence, and we in this community are very proud of how you not only do all of that, but you also give back to the community in so many ways that you have prospered in. Thank you, Suter. Secondly, I want to apologize to the citizens of Sioux City, Woodbury County, for speaking about percentages of unknown subcontractors on a project, the Law Enforcement Center of Woodbury County, without full knowledge of all of the subcontractors that were going to be selected. On Friday of last week, a full list of subcontractors was provided to me, and now I will speak The list I was provided has 52 contractors listed, with one of them being the general contractor, and the remainder being subcontractors. Out of those 52, 44 of them are either out of the state or not in Woodbury County. My math done correctly, 85% of the contractors on this project are either from out of state, out of Sioux City, or out of Woodbury County. Now, I've given you a list of the subcontractors, and the ones highlighted in yellow are the ones from Sioux City. I have another list here that explains each and every contractor on there and where they're from, if you'd like an updated list of where they're from. So, that's really all I wanted to say today. I want to say thank you for your continued support, and I will continue doing what I'm doing.
Ernie, do you have an extra copy of that, where they're from? Or is that, is that your only copy?
An extra copy of the one I gave you?
No, the where they're from. Or is that on here? Where the subcontractors are from? Do you want this back?
No, you can have that.
Okay, I'll make a copy and get it back to you.
I got another one.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Ernie.
Thank you, Ernie. Anyone else be heard?
Hi, Glenda Crooks, 1508 West Palmer. I also have a problem with the new city inspector.
Can you pull the microphone? There you go.
I have a problem with the city inspector.
Would you say their name again?
Chief, can you tell those guys to shut the doors or whatever? Thank you. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I've lived on that block for probably 38 years, I've never...
Where is this, I'm sorry?
The West Palmer.
West Palmer.
1500 block of West Palmer.
Thank you.
They're going to do a project this summer, probably start in June, and tearing up George and West Palmer. We have no place to park. The city inspector came out and already hit us last week and said, that can't be parked there now after 13 years, that can't be parked there after 28 years. Where are we supposed to park? They're coming up with, it has to be on cement. Who can afford yards and yards and yards of cement, yet I've got a church behind me that parks all their stuff in the dirt? Mine's in a yard, I've, my yard's always cleaned up.
It's in the yard, but not on your driveway? Is that what it is?
There's a boat that's sitting there, it's on like pavers, and there's a boat sitting next to it, they swap back and forth, has to use them. We have no actual street parking. I don't know where anybody wants this to park.
You have a paved driveway?
Yeah, there's a car over there. We each have a car and a truck and a boat.
Okay. And so, you can't park on the pavers, or are you parking on your lawn, or what?
Well, we have, there's two boats, so he switches back and forth to one or the other, and I talked to Katie, and she got the okay from the city inspector, the new one, that we can park back there during the construction season, which is going to be June to October, and we know that's going to be the end of November. But where are we supposed to park? I have two yards, I bought the yard next door to me, I live there, and they tore that all down, some Ramares has moved out of there, and I lived there for about 10 years. I'm now in the house now, I paid this one off, I've been there for about 25 years. I've gotten rid of three gang-man houses out of there. I clean up the street all the time, my granddaughter come by the other day, I'm clearing on West Fourth, pushing water around the street off of West Palmer. I mean, my yard's not a mess, and I get a ticket for one boat.
Because the boat is on the pavers?
No, it's on, it's not on the pavers, it's on the...
It's just on the dirt, like in front of it.
And I've got a fence out there, I've got a picture of it, I've got a fence out there, but you have the guy across, I can sit on my front porch and look over there, Naylor, and he has a whole yard full of crap, mattresses and riding lawnmower and a mobile home. I don't know why all of a sudden I'm getting picked on. I asked if I could take the picking table from the side of my house and put it on one of the boats over there alongside of the garage, and then my yard that I bought from the... of the garage. And then my yard that I bought from the city, keep one there. And she said, no, it's one yard. I have a backyard here and a backyard there. And she said, no. I said, if I separate them, she said, then that's a vacant lot and you can't park anything there. I don't know why after, I've been in that block since 85.
And I, I, I don't know the code well enough to cite you exactly what it is, but I think unfortunately what it is, is that it's tough to enforce or to quantify or do things that are maybe unsightly or cluttered or, you know, taking up space such as your neighbor that you, you gave the example. But you can say you're not allowed to park a vehicle or something like that on your yard. And so you could have the cleanest yard in the neighborhood and you're parking vehicles on your yard. You would be the one in violation and not someone that maybe had a whole bunch of stuff on it.
But he has a camper that hasn't moved in probably 15 years, a riding lawnmower, mattresses. The church behind me has three cars in their parking lot. That's all gravel. I can't even open windows on that side of the house when they have church Wednesdays and Sundays. He has a house next door to that. He has five or six cars there. They have a shed there. They have a boat tipped upside down there. I have two boats in the yard and a well-kept yard.
Behind the privacy fence.
Behind the privacy fence. I have pictures. His yard and my yard. I just don't know why all of a sudden after 38 years, that all of a sudden it's now we're, it's a big deal.
Well, I guess we should get the address and get a few more details. How's that sound, Bob?
And then the last snowfall, I have my charger. I had it parked out front and then, um, the snowplow was going to come by, which they didn't. Um, so I moved it to the backyard. Well, it was that time that she came by, but we had nowhere to move it. We had to both go to work. So I moved the charger to the backyard. The truck was gone. There still was a spot there. So I could have probably put it there. She just happened to come down the day my charger was sitting there. But we cleared the street because every house up the street has five, six, seven, eight people living there with three, four cars. There's nowhere to park. I wanted my, at least my spot cleared off when the snowplow came by. Because they park, they seem to push it all against the parked cars.
Right. If they're parked there, right.
It's always one-sided street, you know?
Well, Bob's going to take your address and he's going to follow up with that department and we'll find out.
I appreciate it.
Can I get your address?
1508 West Palmer. Then Katie said during, during June to October with the construction that we're able to park there because we're, she said, well, park on West Fourth, that's one-sided too. Okay, park on West Fifth. And, uh, I'm not going over, I'm not walking two blocks to my car. I have a whole yard here.
Especially during the construction.
That I bought from the city so you don't have to mow it.
That's nice. We appreciate that. We, you should be able to park there during the construction. I mean, that should be no problem, but let, we'll follow up on the other details.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thanks.
All right.
Hi, Greg Carter, 1508 West Palmer. The two boats are mine. Uh, the one boat has been there for 13 years. The other one's been there for about 10. Uh, the boats are both well-kept. They both have very nice tarps on them. Tires are new. They're licensed on time. They set approximately 25 yards off of the alley. Um, maybe six years ago, now I don't remember exactly how many years ago, a city inspector was out there, looked at the boats and said, the boats are fine. I don't understand what changed. I mean, uh, and I seen the letter they sent her that said, uh, it's a nuisance. If you drive down West Palmer, I guarantee you, you can pick her yard out because it's the only one that's maintained. The weeds are knocked down. The snow is removed. I mean, it's the only one on the whole block. And I, I, I just don't understand what changed. The boats have been there that long. Six years ago, the boats were fine. Now they're a problem. I, I don't see it. I, I really don't.
Okay. Well, let us, let us have the city manager try to figure it out for you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else to be heard? Dan, you got to go. So what do you got? I'm going first order tonight.
Nothing further, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Alex?
Well, um, let's see. We have a few different things. It's tolerance week. So there's, um, an event I believe that some of us might've been invited to for celebrating that out at the Railroad Museum. So I'm looking forward to celebrating and remembering that it's tolerance week. Then, um, on Friday, we have the event that was announced at the beginning of council for the, um, workers Memorial Day observance. And then finally, I wanted to just, um, mention in downtown Sioux City, it's restaurant week, um, probably one of my favorite weeks of the year, just for that fact, if nothing else alone.
That bar hopping week is actually your most favorite.
Oh, okay. Something like that.
Second favorite.
Well, if, never mind. Yeah, no, it should be a good time. There are 12 different, um, restaurants that are actually going to be participating and it starts tomorrow night, goes through Saturday. So you can check out all of those menus, um, on Downtown Partners' website. They're prefix menus. So you get usually an appetizer, entree and dessert for $30. Um, so yeah, there's a lot of variations and different fun things to try at different restaurants. So I would encourage everyone to get out and try the different restaurants downtown during restaurant week. And that's all I have.
You want to talk about your presence at the council?
Well, I appreciate it. Well, I mean, I brought it up a little bit last meeting, but yeah, no, we went through the inauguration and yeah, it was a great time.
It was a really nice ceremony. The music was fabulous.
Those that were able to be there and yeah.
I really enjoyed it.
That's what I've heard from a few people.
Fabulous?
Yeah, there were two choirs and.
There were, yeah, the Morningside Choir and then the, yep, the MLA Choir and Sandra Pearson, she can just direct them. I told her, I said, you could have them singing the Pledge of Allegiance and it would still be awesome. So that is really all I have because I do have school programs to.
Soccer game, so.
Do you have a joint meeting on Wednesday?
Mr. O'Kane.
Right, meeting on Wednesday, yeah.
Parking and Skywalk. My name is Park King.
Uh, I want to give a special shout out to, um, Amanda Gibson. I went to see Mamma Mia. I brought a prop. Um, and I, I gotta say, I am partial to my son Sampson's portrayal of Eddie, but in the second act, I, I gotta just give a special shout out to Mr. Hayden Colette, who, uh, I feel like stole the show. So next time Mike is in chambers, I think we should see if it's a family thing. He must have a great voice too. I don't know. Uh, but it was really a, a top-level production, um, audience participation and dancing. Next time I'm inviting Dan. Return to theater, right? Um, the Friends of the Sioux City Public Library Book Sale is still going on through Saturday. If you haven't made it out to that, there's always some good gems there.
Do you know the details? Because I did have, uh, several people and I should've asked Helen while she was here. It was, there was a small admission fee on the first day and then otherwise it's free, right?
Yep.
Okay. Just to check. So anytime you go from here on out, it's, there's no fee.
And then Saturday, the Girl Scouts are going to be at the Bandits. You going to be there?
Need tickets?
Oh, I don't need tickets.
Oh, you getting them from Girl Scouts? So, yeah.
Should be a fun time.
All right. That it? One thing, I drove by 28th and Court only to see that that 7-Eleven store, not only is it trashier than ever, but there's a car sitting on it. These people are, should drive by that. Four, a car on it with all four tires stolen off, but sitting on blocks. We can do better than that.
Sitting on the east side there?
Yeah.
Saw that. I was going to bring that up.
That thing needs to come down. Tire to the promises. Those guys are never going to do anything.
I saw that this weekend. I was going to.
That neighborhood is better without it there than with it there. I move we adjourn.
Second.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.